The Town of Berlin. Country charm at the center of Connecticut.
All right, good evening everyone. It's seven o'clock. We will call this meeting of the Town Council of January 3rd, 2017 to order. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. Roll call, Kate?
Councilwoman Campagnelli?
Here.
Councilwoman Evans?
Here.
Mayor Kozinski?
Here.
Councilwoman Luddy?
Here.
Councilwoman Peinessa?
Here.
Councilwoman Rochette?
Here.
Councilwoman Russell?
Here.
Mayor, your help form.
Thank you. All right, our next order of business will be our audience of citizens. There was a sign up sheet, but you don't -- I'll call the names on the sign up sheet first, and then if anyone else wants to speak, you are certainly welcome to speak. The first name is Bill Baccaro. If you do speak, you have to come forward, please, and state your name and address for the record.
To the mic?
Yes, please.
Bill Baccaro, 499 Lower Lane. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight, and I appreciate that. I'm here tonight to ask that the council consider delaying any action they take for our town manager Denise McNair. On New Year's Eve, I was pretty shocked to see that article in the paper, and so I quickly went online to see what the heck she did wrong to get into this kind of trouble, and I couldn't find anything. So I started Googling around evaluations, and I noticed that Newington, Southington, big towns, small towns like East Hampton, all had done extensive evaluations of their town manager, and come with concrete proposals for action that should be taken. And nothing, as far as I could find, was done with our town manager. This is a town manager, mind you, that has been an employee for almost 25 years. A lifelong Berlin resident, a loyal, dedicated employee, popular not only among other employees, but Democrats and Republicans alike. She was hired as a tax collector under a Republican administration, and I believe that she deserves what every other town manager has: a strong professional evaluation done in an impartial manner. If we are to treat our employees this way, what type of employer are we going to get in the future? When all other towns do professional evaluations and publicize them, and we just, in an executive measure, dismiss a 25-year employee, we certainly will get more people, but we won't get the good people. We won't get the highest quality. Now, when many of you were running successfully for office, you stated that you wanted the Town of Berlin to be run more like a business, efficient. Well, I'm sure you're all very successful. I'm sure many of you not only have been evaluated, but conduct evaluations. And you know just how important those are. They are not taken lightly by businesses nor governments. And I think that the Town of Berlin owes it to Denise and to us, the citizens who have enjoyed the wonderful job she's done over the years, to a professional evaluation. It's only going to postpone what you do. It's not going to keep her job or lose her job, but it's going to make it a professional thing. You people all ran knowing what was in your heart to make the Town of Berlin better. And I know it's going to be a difficult thing. I'm sure you're getting pressure from areas that we can't even describe to take this. But in your heart, you know the right thing to do is to give a person of her quality a good evaluation. Please consider it tonight. Please consider your obligation to Denise as well as us, the citizens. Thank you.
Next on the list is Cliff Cody.
My name is Clifford Cody, 9th Streamside Lane. Thank you, Billy. Took the wind out of my sails. I'm here in regards to also Denise McNair. I saw the article in the paper, and I'm thinking back of the work she's done in the past, and I'm thinking to myself, what has she done that would come to this situation? And I think back, and I say, it's like the US government is politics. All politics. And you guys are sitting there, and you know in your hearts it is, but you'll never admit it, because it's all about, what can I do for my party? Not about what's good for the people of Berlin, or the town, or whatever. Here's a woman who's never used a town car, even though she's obligated to have one. She's used her own personal car to save the people of Berlin money. And now you're letting her go? I just don't understand it. And this comes at a time when the town budget is right around the corner. She's had all the experience. I can't understand why you would let someone with experience like this go in order to get somebody else, because they're from your party, your friend, or your family. Thank you. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Next, we have Julie Erickson.
Good evening. Thank you, Town Council. Please, opportunity. Happy New Year to everyone. I too read the Hartford Current article regarding tonight's executive session surrounding the future of our town manager. It really didn't come as a surprise to me, to be honest with you, because I was told by a Republican in the fall that Denise has to go. When I asked why, really no answer. And I agree with both Billy and Cliff that it's really unfair without an evaluation to just fire a very competent, loyal, dedicated town employee who's been our town manager for the past eight years, and has done a terrific job. Thank you, Denise. So I hope tonight, when you go into executive session, that your conscience will lead you in the direction of what is right, and what is right for the Town of Berlin. If it goes in the opposite direction, I will certainly be very, very disappointed. But again, Denise, you've done a job. Well done. Thank you.
Thank you. The next one on the list is Karen Peliero.
Peliero.
Peliero?
Pegliaro.
Pegliaro? Sorry, I can't read your handwriting. Sorry about that.
People can't pronounce my name either when they hear me. So anyways, my name's Karen Peliero, and I live at 221 Stillwater Lane. And I too was completely shocked when I read the article in the Current the other day. I was amazed that something could be in the newspaper about this, because the job that Denise has done has been truly outstanding. I mean, she stepped up to the plate when we needed an interim town manager. And who was there Denise? Who'd been our tax collector for years, who'd been a town resident, whose kids went to school in our town, not other places, in our town. So the only thing that I could think of is just like Cliff said, that it's a GOP thing, that it's not something that Denise could have done, because she's quite marvelous, and she's always held a town in the best interest. So I say to you, Mr. Mayor, that you need to have a backbone and live up to do what's right for this town, because Denise is what's right for this town.
Okay, we're done with the list, so if anyone else wishes to speak, I will take hands raised from this side, and then I'll go to this side. So we'll just take them as we can. If we have anyone else that wishes to speak, now is your time. Yes. Oh, go ahead. Yeah, I didn't see your hand.
My name's Karen Cody, and--
You could probably turn that down. Just, there you go.
It should be six feet. I just wanted to say ditto to all of that. And Denise is a personal friend. She's an amazing town manager, and I'm just proud that she is our town manager. And I'm hurt. I'm just hurt, Mayor. I really feel like if we were thinking about the town and not politics -- my dad was involved in politics in Newington for years and years and years, and he was a Republican. He said, "You always vote for the man." And I think we're always going to remember this in our town politics, and I think you ought to reconsider and think about what you're doing. I don't think it's Democrat, Republican. I think we've got to work together, and I think by doing this, you're just dividing the lines. I really think it ought to be reconsidered, and I love you, Denise.
Thank you. Okay, next. Any other hands? Yes, sir.
John O'Brien, 12 Vineyard Drive. I read the paper also, and I wasn't shocked. You know, I'm a Berlin constable that receives no tax warrants whatsoever. In 2002, Denise McNair, as an attorney, which she told me, brought in Attorney Rossi from Rhode Island to collect our delinquent taxes in this town. At that meeting, Denise did say that it would have no effects on the constables whatsoever. In 2016, at the charter revision meeting, Denise called for the elimination of all the constables. This is Berlin's heritage. Constables started in 1916. Hundred years ago. She's trying to get rid of them, along with Dave Kozlowski in our tax office. They traded our constables in for attorneys to collect their delinquent taxes. Now, Dave Kozlowski in our tax office that Denise put in charge also is basically co-chairman of Tax Collector's Association, State of Connecticut. Adam Cohen, I'm sorry, yes, Adam Cohen is also basically the general counsel for the State of Connecticut. Just conflict there. So I feel that Denise wasn't upfront, up on it, and honest with our constables. She sold us out. So I'm in agreement, and everything. If she's going to basically take our heritage, sell them out for attorneys to collect our delinquent taxes, we are taxpayers. Our tax office, Dave Kozlowski, doesn't even live in Berlin. He doesn't pay taxes. He's looking for gains, further gains in the State of Connecticut. So as a taxpayer, I'm not happy with Denise McNair at all. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, sir. Next, any other? Yes, sir.
Hi, my name's John McNair. I'd like to discuss the tennis courts and basket -- obviously kidding. Here for my mom. Light joke, lighten mood a little. After that, I wasn't going to say anything. I wanted to come up and just speak on behalf of my mom. I know the councils already got their mind made up, and I'm fine with it, because it's what she wants. Just know that the town has always been first in her heart, and that's it. 25 years, I've seen it firsthand. And if anybody could complain about her, there's three in this room, and we won't, because she's given everything she's had to this town, to us, to everybody here, even if she doesn't know you, to everybody who's going to hear about this, and she's the best. All right? Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak? Yes, sir. Oh. Sorry.
Dave Kuzski, revenue collector, Town of Berlin. Maybe a little partial, because I'm the current tax collector. Denise was the former tax collector. You know, just hearing from her son a couple seconds ago, she feels like a mother to me, in a sense, because, I'll be honest, I don't have a close relationship with my mother, for whatever reason it is, but, you know, I have a great relationship with Denise. She's guided me through the way, and, you know, I've never heard a bad thing about her. And yes, John O'Brien, I don't live in town, I don't pay taxes here, but I work very hard for the Town of Berlin to bring in the money, that's, you know, to bring in the taxes, to make the town function, and, you know, Denise has never, I've never, you know, heard a bad thing, like I said, and she's just given me so much good advice, and I followed that. And like I have heard, she's been here for, with the town for over 25 years. I have never heard a bad word about her. And I think that that was a huge jump for her to go from -- I can't even imagine going from tax collector to town manager in my current position. And the fact that she did that, and I've heard there was a musical chairs of town managers before her, and the fact that she stepped in and did this without any previous experience in that capacity, I think was a big leap, and I think she's been very successful in the last eight years, and, you know, I think you're making a huge mistake, and that's just wanted to make that clear. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
I'm Art Powers, 857 Worthington Ridge Road. I've heard some of the talks tonight, and I also took the wind out of my sails for what I had to say. But I've known Denise since she was a little girl, and I've watched her grow up, and I've watched her success in the office that she holds as town manager. The door is always open, it's never closed. She's a straight shooter. I've never known her to let politics get involved with her office at all. And I'm not going to repeat what has been said, but I'd be very interested in knowing, why was this put on the agenda? Who on the council wanted it put on the agenda? Were there other people out there that wanted it put on the agenda? Something smells, something smells very bad here. And I'm just surprised that the council would sit here and probably deny that they had anything to do with it, but somebody on the council had to ask that it be put on the agenda. And I'd like to know who they are.
Okay, thank you.
Can you answer that?
I'm really not going to answer anything on this issue till after our executive session.
Well, we aren't in the executive session.
I encourage everyone to stay.
I know. We're going to have it on the agenda after the executive session.
All right. Well, I'd be very interested in that, because this is just not right. And I've been in politics for many years in this town, and I've never seen anything like this. So I ask you to change your mind, if you have any intention at all of removing her as your town manager.
Thank you. Yes.
Margaret Morley, 158 Somerset Drive. I just want to state, I know I can't influence your decision, but as a formal council member, and someone who's been around the work of the council for many years, I can tell you that Denise has brought tremendous professionalism to her role as town manager. She has been, had brought efficiencies to the town government. She has made tremendous hires. She has been a wonderful town manager in a town, a system of town government that requires on a professional to be our manager, and to have politics stay with the council. And so I just wanted to be on record, as a formal councilperson, I've experienced the expertise, the professionalism, the great work of Denise McNair, and support her fully. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? Before we close, the audience of citizens? Well, if you already spoke, sorry. We got, if, anyone else? Okay. To close this part, the audience of citizens, we'll move on to the agenda. Thank you all very much. Appreciate your input. Consent agenda. We've all had this presented to us. If we have no questions, we'll take a motion on this.
Okay, I'll make a motion to accept the four items on the consent agenda as written.
Second on that?
Second, Mayor.
All those in favor?
Aye.
opposed? So moved. Item number one, new business?
As council knows, the statement of need has been requested by the Worthington Meeting House, or the Friends of the Worthington Meeting House, and at the last meeting, it was discussed that Jack Keely, our Public Works Director, would assist them in developing the statement of need for council to take a look at, and to also send to the Public Building Commission for them to continue soliciting qualifications and proposals for design architects with historic building experience, and going through with the RFP and RFQ process.
Okay. Yeah, I think we spoke about this at the, at the last meeting, right? So we can do a motion on this.
Okay, move to refer the statement of needs for the Worthington Meeting House Building Renovations Design Development to the Public Building Commission for review and development of preliminary plans and cost estimates pursuant to Section 8-11-3 of the Charter.
Okay, second on this?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Item number two?
The Fleet Garage currently has funding to replace the compressed air piping system in the municipal garage. Specification was created, and it went out to bid in early, or late June of 2016. There were seven vendors that participated in the bid. Midstate Air Compressor of Berlin was the lowest bidder at $15,931. There have been two change orders, which has increased, which both have increased the price of the, in an amount of $2,203.99. There is some additional monies left in the repiping compressed air system account, and also the auto parts account, $134, $134.99. Jim, I think, is here, if there are questions, but he is seeking approval of the two change orders, and recommending the council allow $2,069 additional cost.
Thank you. Motion on this?
Move to approve the two change orders, additional drops at the large lift and in the tire room, that are needed to pay the outstanding invoice for the repiping of the air system for the garage.
Second on this?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Or moved? Number three?
After having some difficulties having the physicals done timely by the current town physician, Jim Simons, the Fleet Fire Administrator, had gone out with a committee to seek other input from other vendors to provide the physicals for the fire department. They also checked the State of Connecticut Department of Administrative Services bid list, and they found that Hartford Healthcare, Hartford Healthcare Medical Group in, I think it's Weathersfield, would provide the physicals at a cheaper and more efficient timeliness, so that he is requesting to have the purchase of the physicals through Hartford Healthcare Medical Group utilizing the State of Connecticut DAS contract for 2017.
Okay, thank you. Motion on this?
Move to approve the purchases of physicals through Hartford Healthcare Medical Group utilizing the State of Connecticut DAS contract, number 15PS60238 for calendar year 2017.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Question for Mr. Simons? Just a question on, an indication here in the agenda item indicating that the department is seeing savings on an average of $200 per physical. Is that because we have utilized those services now from this, off of this bid, and haven't reached the threshold? Or is it that that would be the potential, we would see in savings?
No, we, we currently are using Hartford Healthcare. We are now reaching the threshold, we're about $8,000, so it's time to bring it forward and get it approved for the remaining amount of funds. We've had approximately, off the top of my head, about 25 people, or just under a third of the members, have gone to this. All reviews have been great versus where we were before. So in fact, in the budget, and in the budget that I presented to the town manager, there was a reduction in that account just because of the changeover to this physician group.
Also, the current contract with the town physician is set to expire this year. It's the third year of the three-year contract, so we're going to be looking with Adam Toulon and the other departments that use the physician are the nurses and the Board of Ed, so we're looking to see what exactly we do need in the future, so that we may carve out that piece and hopefully save money in that.
Okay, great.
Good. What's that?
Okay. Motion on the floor? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. I'm going to table the appointments for tonight. Move on to the town manager's report.
Just a couple of things. There is the reminder that there's the opioid forum at Berlin High School next, I guess that's Wednesday, January 11th, at 6:00 PM in the new auditorium at the high school. So that will be, I think, one of the first events that are being held in the new auditorium. And then because of that, the public information session on the transit-oriented development is going to be held on January 25th at the community center from 6:00 to 7:30, so that's open to the public as well. Just quickly, I had sent council an email last week upon learning that the state had cut mid-year the budget for the town in the area of the LOSIP funds and the ECS. LOSIP, anything that was in the state's hands before December 22nd, and we got this on December 29th, would be still honored, but anything after that is not going to be honored. I think it looks, after speaking to Kevin Delaney, our finance director, I think it looks all right for the basketball courts and the tennis courts, because we had gotten those in timely, I believe. But there were a couple of other projects that had not reached that stage, that were in the budget last year and earmarked for LOSIP, which may be in some jeopardy. I think one of them, I saw Kevin in the back, but I think one of them was for $40,000, and I'm not sure what the other one was, but those may not be able to be LOSIP-eligible any longer. In the ECS area, we lost approximately $134,000 in ECS this year, so I'm not sure. I haven't had a chance to talk to Dave Irwin or Eva. I did see Eva here earlier, but I haven't talked to them as far as what they may need to, to make up that difference. But that was mid-year, which had never happened before, but it's happening now, so we have to deal with it.
Just a question on the LOSIP funds. Were there any of the main street, streetscape improvement applications that are in that we would need that those LOSIP funds?
I don't believe so, no. All of those have been approved. Anything that was already approved or in our hands, they weren't taking back, but we hadn't yet gotten to a couple of the other things. I think one was an ADA retrofit in one of the playgrounds, I think, and I didn't look at last year's budget to find out what those were exactly.
I would imagine those cuts are just a harbinger of things to come next year from our legislature, so it'll be a difficult budget here.
That didn't come from the legislature.
What's that?
No.
From the governor's office, but yeah, I imagine we'll see more cuts from both. Anything else, Denise? Special committee reports?
Are we ordinance committee meeting?
Yeah, we have the, I don't think we said a date, did we? We've got two things in January.
Yeah, that's what I, I didn't know if anybody wanted to do. We have a meeting on the 17th, and then there's two, there's the 25th and the 11th. I didn't know if there was another day of the week that you wanted to try for a, we did a Monday the last time, and that seemed to work, but--
Yeah. I mean, I like before a meeting, but whenever works for you guys--
Before on the 17th?
Yeah. Whatever works for you guys instead of--
No, that's fine. Same day.
Yeah.
We can do that. We can do that. Okay. Anything else?
No.
Commissions? Nothing else? All right, we'll move on to councilor communications. Yes?
I would just encourage everyone who's in the audience to stay until after the executive session, as there will be a vote and discussion. And as this, I will be finding out the details for the first time shortly. I think it's important that you all have the opportunity to hear from council members on what is going to take place and what the plan is going forward. If you can't stay, I would encourage you to, to watch the video on, on Access TV, and so that's all I'm going to say. Encourage you to stay if you can.
Yeah. Videos get posted on the Town of Berlin's website, so they're pretty easily accessible.
Any other? Motion on that?
Motion to accept the meeting minutes from December 20th, 2016.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Mayor, just a correction on there. I added, I just needed to have a statement of seconded by on page eight of 10, and I advised the town clerk of that.
Okay, thank you. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries now. This brings us, folks, to our executive session, so what we're gonna have to do, I apologize, is we have to clear the room, and then if you would please wait, huh? We want us to leave? We can do that. Yeah, we can leave, let's do that. It's probably easier if you guys just stay. I don't know where else you'd sit downstairs or anywhere, so we can do that. So, we will, motion to move on to executive session.
Motion for going to executive session, personnel matters, Connecticut General State Statute, Section 1-200, 6A, concerning the appointment, employment, performance, evaluation of a public employee. Town manager.
Second?
Who are we inviting in?
And we are inviting in the town council and the corporate union council.
Yes. Okay, so, we have a second on that?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, so, we'll be at executive session, we'll be back as soon as we can, folks. Motion to come out of executive session?
Motion to come out of executive session at 8:00 PM.
Second on that?
Second.
In favor?
Aye.
All right, we convene this town council meeting at 8:00 AM?
8:00.
8:00. All right, so, we're out of executive session, we're on to topic number four, acceptance of proposed agreement between the town and the town manager. Take a motion on this?
Motion, topic number four, acceptance of proposed agreement between the town manager and the town.
Second on that?
Second.
For discussion?
Let's start.
Yes, you may.
He doesn't want me to, but I'm going to. So, I found out about this agreement on Friday morning, before the agenda came out. We had received a call from the press asking us about what was happening with what was on the agenda, and we knew nothing about it. Similar to what's happening on the national level with what happened last night with the vote in terms of getting the ethics office, they were called out on that and they had to change that. This was done without any knowledge on the three of ours part. I've been told that only one person on the Republican side knew about it other than the mayor. The mayor has taken this upon himself to act as the entire council, to come into an agreement with Denise. I am going to use the word "fire." He is going to protest. He is going to say this is not a firing, this is not termination. This is an agreement upon which Denise and the council have come to terms. Denise is a smart, intelligent woman. She saw the writing on the wall, she knew they had the votes, she was going to do what was best for her, so she signed that agreement. I am appalled that they are going to now sit here and say that this is not political. When we went to ask for the causes, we got one, one cause. There was no other specifics. I cannot support this agreement. I know Denise has come to terms with this. She has signed it, but I will not be supporting it. This is purely political. This is the Republican Town Committee telling the four Republican members of this council what to do. You're now gonna hear them protest it, but that is what is occurring. Denise, in her eight-year tenure, she has changed union negotiations tremendously for the better. We now have great working relationships with our unions. We are able to have them staggered so that we are not getting raises hit all at once. She did that. She has instituted a continuity improvement plan so that if there is a disaster in this town, we now have, all of our online capabilities are still there, all of the data, all of our paychecks will be able to be filed. That was Denise. The hires that Denise has done, single-handedly, have saved this town money. We now have someone who is looking at how we are doing our purchasing. We have a purchasing agent. That was Denise's idea. Denise has many, many things that she's done behind the scenes that most people don't even know about, not to mention the relationships that Denise has built with those agencies outside of this town that will now be gone. Kirma, CCM, BCCRO, I don't even know what it is, it's not in existence anymore, right? There is so much that Denise has done that is going to go unsung. They're gonna tell you, change is good. Change is, for change's sake, is not always good. And change at this time of the year is insane. We have budget coming up with a brand-new finance director, never been through the budget process before. We are going to have an interim town manager, who is also going to be our Public Works Director, in the middle of winter, who also is fairly new. God bless him. And he's going to have to do the search for a new town manager. Timing is ridiculous. Denise, I support you 100%, but I cannot, in good conscience, vote for this agreement.
Okay. Any other comments?
Do you wanna go first?
Your hand was up.
All right. I'm just gonna echo what Rachel said. I think it's absolutely appalling that I was handed an agreement, a six-page agreement to read, what, like 35 minutes ago? I found out about it from the press. None of you even had the decency to call any of us and let us know that this was on the agenda. This is just, the way that this was done is just incomprehensible. It's just...
Called you Friday.
You called me after the press called me, on Friday, to tell me that this was on the agenda.
I talked about it.
Yeah, after the press called me, to tell me that this was on the agenda.
I understand that.
I'd appreciate it if you wouldn't interrupt me while I was speaking. So, one other thing I've learned from being a woman in politics, pretty similar to this, is when people are full of BS, men particularly, and I've heard a lot of BS today. A lot of tomfoolery, a lot of hot words. I don't believe for one second that you forgot to call any of us. I don't believe for one second that you intended to make this a partnership and to work with any of us. You threw this on the agenda to blindside us and make sure that none of these people would be able to be here tonight, and I think that's disgusting. I can't support this, and I will not support this.
David, is it?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Excuse me, I apologize. I'm late to the meeting. I was at the booster meeting, and I thought that this issue was gonna be last on the docket, but I apologize, it's already been spoken about, but have we asked why this is needed?
Your guess is as good as ours.
We haven't been given any.
Well, we talked about it in the executive session. This is not a termination agreement, she's not being fired. This is a agreement. We have an agreement.
Fire! We're dummy!
It's not true.
We're asked!
Fine, fine, fine.
Remember, remember! Can you explain to me, what is the meaning?
That wasn't the purpose of it. That's why we proposed, we have a proposed separation agreement, because Denise and I have already talked about this, and we've come to an agreement about her separation from the town. It's not, it's not a hearing on...
It's because there isn't a reason.
I will praise Denise, Denise has done a great job. I'm not here to disparage Denise whatsoever. That's not the reason why we're here.
That's in the agreement.
This is gonna be a change in the town manager position. That's what it's about. It's about a change. It's not to disparage Denise in any way, in any form.
There's a non-disparagement clause in the agreement.
You don't want change. We were, we were good with...
I can only do what I think is in the best interest of the town. That's all I can do.
Mayor, I'd like to speak now.
Mayor, you should be, take control.
Yeah, it's not, it's not for purposes of this discussion. We have a motion on the floor, we have to discuss it amongst the council.
So, Ben, would you present that to us after that?
The agreement will be public knowledge, yes.
They're not gonna tell you why. He even started conversations or entered into an agreement. He wouldn't even tell us why, so...
There isn't any reason.
We discussed it. We discussed it.
No transparency!
It was discussed. You're gonna see the agreement?
Yeah.
It's a consensual agreement. It's a consensual agreement.
This is some Donald Trump consent right here.
It's consensual. This is not a hearing, this is not a hearing on the town manager. That's not why we're here. We didn't, we're not doing that. That's not why we're here.
Why? You're not gonna be here.
Do what you gotta do. I do what I think is best for the town. If you don't agree, I understand that, but we're trying to do what's best for the town.
Mayor?
Yes?
May I speak?
Yes.
I think at this point, it's the council that is discussing one with another, okay? And I appreciate everyone's interest to be here this evening, and you got a lot of shout-outs and a lot of concern. I understand that, okay? There was some indication that, that particular leadership is telling us what to do. No one's telling me what to do, okay? You can believe what you want to believe, but I am expressing what I feel in this situation, okay? I've known...
Feelings don't equal facts.
I've known Denise for a number of years, and we've had a working relationship. I commented on some improvements that took place with communication, which I appreciated with our monthly reports. It's very helpful for the council members. It's helpful for us to keep you informed as a citizen, a body of citizens. There's a number of things that have driven us as a town and as a state to be more proactive with respect to disaster, and Denise has helped us with that, but it is something that other communities certainly were moving forward with. As I spoke with her earlier this year, and asked how she felt about what she was doing, and she'd indicated that she was comfortable with the job that she was doing. And I respect that, and that's how she felt. I have felt that at this point, we need to take things to a higher level, to take this town forward in a direction that will build upon the successes that she's brought, and with the change that came with this past election, there was some sentiment from citizens for some changes. And we're moving forward with those. Concerns that I had heard from a number of folks, but also just a desire to do even greater things for our town. There will be a search process. We will select the replacement. They will be interim or a temporary, and we'll look to go in the direction that, and we look to everyone's help to move the town forward in that direction. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Hello?
Counselor Evans indicated that there would be a search. Obviously, there will be a search. It's a foregone conclusion, it was foregone before we got here. But I just wanna point out, and I wanna ask the mayor, were you aware that West Hartford is looking for a new town manager, as is Rocky Hill, and both are offering a higher salary?
I read that in the paper, I did.
So, do you think that we will be getting the best of the best for Berlin in this situation?
That's what I would expect.
Okay.
That's right. Hey, there's Rocky Hill's right next door.
Anyone else in the council?
And they have to, you have to live in Berlin, so they have to move to Berlin, correct?
That's...
If it's outside of town?
That's what the charter says.
Okay, thank you.
Are we rehearsing the charter? I understand what it says, and we're gonna do a search committee. We're gonna find an independent candidate. We're not looking to put anybody in this office, and that's what we're gonna do moving forward.
I'd like to, just briefly, for that search committee, I hope that all of the council members will serve on it and not just a select few.
We'll do that?
I would hope that every single one of us, as one body, gets to have a say in who our next town manager will be.
We'll do that, we'll do that, absolutely.
Thank you.
Next meeting, we'll form a search committee.
Excellent.
How do you go to bed at 8:00? He's hard to convince. Really.
It's freedom of speech.
Any chance you'll review it, change your mind?
No. Do you have to vote, public session?
We have to vote.
We're gonna vote now, if we're all done up here on the council. Yes, sir.
Just a couple, couple things. I've been asked, and you know, let's, let's keep this civil. I've been asked why this is happening, and why the majority decided to do it, because they can. The four-three rule is in effect. They have four votes, we have three. Similar to what occurred when we changed town attorneys. They did it because they can do it. I feel betrayed, because I've tried to work with the majority over the past, how many months it's been? Thirteen or so. And I'm really not happy with the communications on this, and maybe I'll have to reevaluate my opinion of all of them. And that's all I have to say.
With that being said, I'd like to know what's next, then. If they do this, then what else can we do?
Anything they want. Anything they want.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. We'll take a vote.
I request a vote be by roll call, please.
That's fine.
Counselor Campanelli?
I vote nay to accepting the agreement.
Counselor Evans?
Aye.
Counselor Luddy?
Aye.
Counselor Pignessa?
Aye.
Counselor Ruschett?
Absolutely nay.
Counselor Rosso?
No.
Mayor Kozinski?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, thank you. All right, topic number five is just a discussion. Now, this, in this agreement, Denise is not going anywhere for a month. She'll be with us till the end of January. Now, the agreement was approved. This is an agreement that was agreed upon by Denise prior to our vote. And, you know, we'll be moving forward with it, but for the month, we can discuss a temporary town manager. Now, temporary means they're not, they're not an interim town manager, they're temporary. And it would, and it wouldn't, it wouldn't take effect till February 1st, actually, so we don't need to vote on that tonight. I have some thoughts on it. To make the transition as seamless as possible, I would choose a town employee. My suggestion would be Jack Healy, that he would be the temporary town manager. That's after Denise's term ends at the end of January. My hope is that for the next month, they would work together for a transition, and at our next meeting, we would form our search committee, and we would go ahead and do a search statewide or further if we need to. And then hopefully, 90 to 120 days, we'd have a manager or sooner. So...
So, if this is just discussion, and we're not voting on it till, what, next meeting?
We could vote on it tonight.
Or February 1st?
We could vote on it tonight as well.
It just seems crazy that if you guys already know you're gonna do Jack, which you already know you're gonna do Jack, why would we not take a vote on it tonight?
It's helpful for us to keep you informed as a citizen, a body of citizens. There's a number of things that have driven us as a town and as a state to be more proactive with respect to disaster. And Denise has helped us do with that, but it is something that other communities certainly were moving forward with. As I spoke with her earlier this year, and asked how she felt about what she was doing, and she'd indicated that she was comfortable with the job that she was doing. And I respect that, and that's how she felt. I have felt that, at this point, we need to take things to a higher level, to take this town forward in a direction that will build upon the successes that she's brought. And with the change that came with this past election, there was some sentiment from citizens for some changes. And we're moving forward with those. Concerns that I had heard from a number of folks, but also just a desire to do even greater things for our town. There will be a search process. We will select the replacement. They will be an interim or a temporary, and we'll look to go in a direction that, and we look to everyone's help to move the town forward in that direction. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Hello?
I would like to.
Yes.
Councilor Evans indicated that there would be a search. Obviously, there will be a search. It's a foregone conclusion. It was foregone before we got here. But I just wanna point out, and I wanna ask the mayor, were you aware that West Hartford is looking for a new town manager, as is Rocky Hill, and both are offering a higher salary?
I read that in the paper, I did.
So, do you think that we will be getting the best of the best for Berlin in this situation?
That's what I would expect.
Okay.
Denise will end up there.
That's right. Hey, there's an idea. Rocky Hill's right next door.
Anyone else in the council?
And they have to, you have to live in Berlin, so they have to move to Berlin, correct?
That's.
If it's outside of town?
That's what the charter says.
Okay, thank you.
Are we rehearsing the charter? I understand what it says, and we're gonna do a search committee. We're gonna find an independent candidate. We're not looking to put anybody in this office, and that's what we're gonna do moving forward.
I'd like to, just briefly, for that search committee, I hope that all of the council members will serve on it and not just a select few. I would hope that every single one of us, as one body, gets to have a say in who our next town manager will be.
We'll do that. We'll do that, absolutely.
Thank you.
Next meeting, we'll form a search committee.
Excellent.
How do you go to bed at 8:00? Is it conscious or unconscious?
Freedom of speech.
Any chance you'll review it, change your mind? Do you have to vote, public session?
We have to vote.
We're gonna vote now, if we're all done up here on the council. Yes, sir.
Just a couple, couple things. I've been asked, and you know, let's, let's keep this civil. I've been asked why this is happening, and why the majority decided to do this. Because they can. The four-three rule is in effect. They have four votes, we have three. Similar to what occurred when we changed town attorneys. They did it because they can do it. I feel betrayed, because I've tried to work with the majority over the past, how many months it's been? Thirteen or so. And I'm really not happy with the communications on this, and maybe I'll have to reevaluate my opinion of all of them. And that's all I have to say.
With that being said, I'd like to know what's next, then. They can do this, then what else can you do?
Anything they want. Anything they want.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Take a vote.
I request the vote be by roll call, please.
That's fine.
Councilor Campanelli?
I vote nay to accepting the agreement.
Councilor Evans?
Aye.
Councilor Luddy?
Aye.
Councilor Penaissa?
Aye.
Councilor Shet?
Absolutely nay.
Councilor Rosso?
No.
Mayor Krasinski?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, thank you. All right, topic number five is just a discussion. Now, this, in this agreement, Denise is not going anywhere for a month. She'll be with us till the end of January, now the agreement was approved. This is an agreement that was agreed upon by Denise prior to our vote. And, you know, we'll be moving forward with it. But for the month, we can discuss a temporary town manager. Now, temporary means they're not, they're not an interim town manager, they're temporary.
It'll be a little month.
And it would, and it wouldn't, it wouldn't take effect till February 1st, actually, so we don't need to vote on that tonight. I have some thoughts on it. To make the transition as seamless as possible, I would choose a town employee. My suggestion would be Jack Healy, that he would be the temporary town manager. That's after Denise's term ends at the end of January. My hope is that for the next month, they would work together for a transition. And at our next meeting, we would form our search committee, and we would go ahead and do a search statewide or further, if we need to. And then hopefully 90 to 120 days, we'd have a manager, or sooner. So.
So, if this is just discussion, and we're not voting on it till, what, next meeting?
We can vote on it tonight.
Or February 1st?
We can vote on it tonight as well.
It just seems crazy that if you guys already know you're gonna do Jack, which you already know you're gonna do Jack, why would we not take a vote on it tonight? It's foolish.
I'm not saying we're not, I'm not saying we're not gonna take the vote on it.
It just, it doesn't make any sense, just to be discussion only. Why let them work together and then say, "No, it's not gonna be Jack"?
I didn't say that. I said that was my opinion, to talk about it tonight and then possibly take the vote. So, yeah, if you wanna talk about it. I mean, you didn't like the fact that he was a town employee and the director of public works.
I didn't say I didn't like that he was not, he was a town employee. I said the timing of this is.
Do you have another?
She didn't say Jack.
Do you have another suggestion?
Denise?
Do you have another suggestion? She's already here for the 30 days. Thank you very much.
It's not funny.
No, it's not.
If we were laughing, we'd be crying.
Yeah, well, it's not funny, you're right. It's not funny at all. Yes?
So, yeah, Mayor, I was just gonna say that the agenda item was for discussion and possible appointment of temporary town manager. I certainly feel it would be in our best interest to pick and move forward with a temporary town manager, at least giving some heads up to that. That would then facilitate the conversation and the discussion and the plan in that direction. So, I have, as budget chair, have worked with Mr. Healy over the past budget and into this new one, and I'm comfortable with his capabilities.
Good. All right. Any discussion on that?
I would say to Denise and to Jack, I think it's going to be extremely important, especially to you, Jack, that in the interim, that you work with the staff to quell any concerns that they may have. This is gonna be a really unsure time for them. So, for the staff that is here tonight, please know you have my support in whatever you're doing, and I know Jack will do a good job. I know Denise will prep Jack to do a good job to all of you. But it is going to be very important that the people who work for this town, who keep this town running, know that they have the support of at least one of us up here, and they do. So, Jack, I would just encourage you to meet with every department within the next month.
Yeah. I'm gonna echo what Rachel said. I think you'll do a fine job, Jack, and you guys have our support out there, and I want you to know that, all of you.
Me too. Think Jack could be a fine candidate. I know he's gonna meet with the town staff. Will probably accomplish that with Denise and Jack this week, to make sure they understand going forward, it'll be a smooth transition, and we will continue down the road in a smooth fashion.
But there hasn't been a vote yet, so.
No, we're gonna, we're just discussing it. We'll put the motion on the floor, and then we'll take the vote. So, hearing what I heard, we had some, so go ahead and let's make a motion.
I'll make a motion to appoint Mr. Jack Healy as the temporary town manager.
With what effective date, please?
February 1st.
And for a term of how long?
Not to exceed 90 days, and that's per the charter.
Can you reread the motion?
I will make a motion to appoint Jack Healy as the temporary town manager, starting February 1st, and not to exceed 90 days thereafter.
Second on that?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, thank you. Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Aye.
Aye.
Favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.